You ready?
Hillary. Hillary is coming. Better question.
We can get started and join as soon as we get here. I will call the regular Ridgeway Town council meeting on Wednesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty five. The quarter. Call Ro.
Councilor Scramley.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
They, uh, Montague. Here. Skyler is not present for roll call. Uh, Scoville.
Here.
Mayor for town Lakin.
Yeah.
And Mayor Clark.
Here. Thank you. That brings us to. Let's see. Let's see. Um. That brings us to additions or deletions and or deletions to the agenda. Are there any?
I have a number.
Okay.
Uh, to the consent agenda. There's the renewal of the group pub liquor license for color Colorado way brewing. The fermented malt and wine license for Ridgeway Conoco and the permitted malt and wine license for Ridgeway Shell. And then I'd like to add under public press number nine. To be closer of request to close North Clinton Street between Cora and Laura on August second for community block party. And it gave you all a copy of that petition in front of you.
Then the one from Para for is that from the?
That's on the agenda.
That's already.
Just didn't get it.
That's the form. Right. Preston, you will need.
Good.
Okay. Um, I will. Note the additions to the consent counter and ask you to remind me about the ones to take up at the end of public requests. Um, that brings us to the consent counter. They're getting on it. Who wants to bring off, pull off and consider separately or is their motion approved?
Some note.
Second. All right. Well, I said by Kevin, Ro call vote please.
That's the number Scrambling.
Hello.
Kroger.
I.
Montague.
I.
Scoville.
I.
Mayor for town Bacon.
I.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. That brings us to public comments. This is established time on the agenda for anyone to address council about anything that's not otherwise on the agenda. Public comment they want to make. Come on out, Paul.
Hey. Well, once again, mag chloride filled with one of my trees. And I would really urge the town to start looking for alternatives. You require people to plant trees. You have restricted water things from when trees get big, costs you a lot of money to water them. And you pour mag chloride on and kill them. This is my second tree. This is a twenty inch caliber cottonwood that I planted thirty years ago. And I don't think it's going to make it. So there's a lot of alternatives out there. There's late night copolymer stuff that's non-toxic. I mean, you're, you got time to research it before budget in the fall. It'd be really nice to switch to something that's not killing trees. And it's pretty known that it does so. Anyway. The shame.
Yeah, it is.
You know.
Very. Thanks. And, uh, yeah. We can all agree that staff should take a look at alternatives to mag chloride. See what?
There's lots out there.
See what? But I know. Actually, I think we use it. And one thing. There was some call back to it.
Well.
Well, there's, it's really important.
Hold on a second, Ben.
By July, it doesn't even work. It's just blowing around the town. My first tree was killed by the dust from the mag chloride. It was spruce pine. No, it was bruised and burned the needles off and killed the tree. And that's, you know, I don't know if you guys. But. It doesn't really. Um. You know, it just. By July, it's just blowing around. You look at soon as, as soon as it dries out, um, mag chloride isn't efficient in an area that has low humidity. And we have low humidity here to then just doesn't stay on the roads. It just dries out and blows away. Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Paula. Work on it, guys. All right. Anybody else?
I was gonna chime in there, John. Um, we have to remember that we have to keep dust down for breathing issues. And I encourage anybody who's upset about the use of mag chloride to come back. And speak up when we talk about paving, when we get the folks who say, I like my Ridgway unpaved and old school. Please come forward. And remember, it's a way around mag chloride.
Agreed. Um, I've always said that with best solution would be to chip seal the town. But that's big money. So. But it is something we could start budgeting on an equitable basis. Good point. Um. Paula, come on up.
Hi. Paula James, Donna, I live here in Sola Ranch, and we built an ADU this last year. So, uh, when we did, we incurred the extra utility charge of roughly a hundred dollars. And, you know, it's, I'm not here to talk about our project, but about the rationale behind that charge. Because we started looking at it and thinking, I don't, we didn't really understand why it was needed. So I talked to Preston and I talked to Angie to try to understand the town's rationale. And, um, I understand a couple of the reasons, if I got this right. Uh, one is the tap fee, because I think Preston mentioned, you know, we don't, we aren't charged a new tap fee for an ADU. And I asked Angie about how much that was, and she wasn't really sure, but she thought maybe about six thousand dollars. So I don't know if that's part of, you know, the fact that the town waves that fee has anything to do with a hundred dollar a month target. It may not. That may be strictly based on the extra usage that we assume that people dwelling in the ADU will use. But if it's tap fee has nothing to do with it. You know, six thousand dollars is a real cost. And I'm not sure that's true because, you know, we're not a duplex. We use the same lines. So I don't know what the cost really is for, um, the fact that we're not paying a, you know, how much the town is saving by the fact that we're not paying a cap, the cap fee. Or how much it's costing the town. But anyway, if that is even a factor, it would make more sense from the homeowner's point of view. To pay the tap fee because the hundred dollars a month goes on forever. But I suspect the, the more compelling rationale is the expected over usage of utilities due to the ADU, which makes sense. You assume another dwellings, another intersper fee, you're going to have more people, you're going to use more water and sewage and trash. Um, but the question about that is, we already have a mechanism, at least as far as I can make that, we already have a mechanism to capture over usage. We charge, we pay extra if we use more water, we pay extra if we need another trash bin. So it seems like we're capturing the cost of applying beyond the memo usage. So again, I think we were just left puzzled as to what that hundred dollars is really accomplishing. And if it's necessary, because there's a downside to it, not just in fact that it's more expensive for the homeowner, but in terms of affordable housing. Most of those ADUs are going to be rental problems. And I think we want to encourage those because they're usually less expensive rental problems than fully owned. So you'd think we'd want to encourage homeowners to do that and keep the costs down. But I would think that most homeowners who are going to rent out their ADU are going to add that hundred dollars a month to the rent. So, you know, that's defeating the purpose. So anyway, I think he's, a person also told me, y'all have been over this issue before. You're probably not likely to want to jump into it again anytime soon. And I sympathize. But I thought it was worth saying this anyway. So make a note, if you do revisit the question, think about those things, you know, whether the, you know, giving this allowance on the tap fee really justifies, you know, as in any way connected to the hundred dollar charge. And whether, oh, and the other benefit, as Preston pointed out, is we're not charged the full utility rate. And we're charged seventy-two percent of the utility. But again, if the other mechanisms capture that any over uses, then, you know, that's not necessarily a benefit either.
Can I, can I give you an explanation?
Yeah, please, John.
Um, before we get our ADU ordinance, if you had a home on a, on a lot and the lot was big enough to build a second structure, either as a duplex attached or detached. If it was big enough, you could put a second structure on that lot. You would have to buy a water and sewer tab for that structure. I think at the time it was probably on like four thousand apiece. And I do believe now it's six or seven thousand dollars for each water and sewer. And once the structure is done and occupied, it'd be a full utility bill for that property, for that structure. So the ADU thing put in place that you don't, you could hook up onto the existing connection, the existing taps and not pay a tap fee. But yes, it's a whole other structure that still should pay a utility bill because it's a whole nother family living in that structure. But we give you the, the allowance of that seventy-two percent. Does that help you understand it? I mean, I, I get your point of, if it's about affordable housing, then maybe we should waive that. But I can, the only way I could see that work is if the person who is renting out the ADU agreed to de-restrict the rental on it. So the rent was affordable at some AMI. Because I see rents in this town just ridiculously high. And if they're going to be high, then the, the property owner doesn't deserve a break on it. I don't. So that, that's my hopefully helpful explanation of where it was before we had ADUs and what the thinking was in the issue.
Okay, well, let me address those. So I'm not saying that we're doing the homeowner a favor if you cut that fee. I'm saying you're doing the renter a favor because the homeowner is probably going to pass that cost on to the tenant. And the other point about, you know, it's only the seventy-two percent. I mean, we're still back to the fact that the town's already collecting a fee for any over usage.
We're not, we're not actually collecting that fee because we're talking about sewer in addition to water. We only collect overages on water. But it also increases your base amount of water you're allowed to have because now you have two structures. So the other piece of this is that if we don't do that, you're going to constantly have an overage and you're probably going to be paying the hundred dollars anyway.
Anyway, for sewage?
No, for your water. But what she's saying is that when you get, not only do you get that seventy-two percent of a regular single family's home water bill, but you get a higher allowance before you go into overages.
Oh, I see.
A higher.
Okay, that's a fact I didn't know.
Yeah.
So that's another piece of the puzzle.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's complicated and I think we've done the best job we felt we could, given all the input that we've had over the years. I understand your, your take on it, but I think, I think we have come up with the best compromise. I like the idea of maybe introducing some options for reducing the cost if the homeowner who rents the ADU is willing to de-restrict it and give it a more affordable rent. That I think we could look.
How, how would that look if you did restrict the rent on an ADU in physical?
The same way you do for space to create those, those rental units that, that people rent those units have to show their income and prove that they need a certain income level. And as such.
Oh, I see.
They, they get a reduced rent from what?
Well, that's a thought. So you're saying if the, if the homeowner agrees to keep their rent lower than the market.
Right.
Then you could give them a break on the.
Possibly. Someone give a cut.
That makes some sense to me. We always rent low market, so that's appealing to me that I, are ADUs now running? Are they also?
I, I haven't heard of anything running for less than fifteen hundred, two thousand bucks.
So. I've heard of one at three thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just, I think you're going to have a, a non-starter with even people who care about their renters deed restricting, because that's a long-term.
So I see.
In your property. Um, I would love some sort of agreement or attestation you turned into town for those things like. A deed, a deed restriction is a, a big bar. Also, a hundred, a hundred dollars, like as a landlord, you're paying those costs of whatever unit you're doing. It's kind of packaged in from the beginning. It's not, it's not being passed on because it's your cost. It's not a new cost town is giving. It's part of your baseline ownership of that ADU.
Well, let me ask you about the sewage part of it. I didn't get a, a clear answer in my querying about what I knew that that was not included in. That, well, anyway, it's another expense that I don't understand. You've raised that as something that the town still has additional. Right?
Every, every residence pays water and sewage.
Right.
Part of bill and water and trash and recycling is how the part of bill.
And we don't charge an overage on sewer because it's kind of packaged with your water. If it's used with your house, we're charging you a little bit more. Um, but again, you have two units. You're getting more water. There is, as John very clearly explained, you could just pay a new tap fee and have a full one hundred percent bill instead of a seventy-two percent bill.
Or, you know, just charge for the overage, which we're already doing. But John did give me some more information there that is relevant and I appreciate that. Um, anyway, it sounds like y'all are pretty well set in the policy you have now, and it's probably is a good one. Anyway, I think y'all, I appreciate all the time you devote to town for this and we're grateful.
Thank you, Paula. Appreciate you being here. Yep.
Um, I have something. Um, and I thought I remembered back in like twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, there was a whole campaign to encourage restaurants to be using compostable to-go containers and, uh, you know, corn-based or, uh, compostable silverware kind of stuff.
Maybe it's required.
I, if it's required, we are way, way far away from it. Um, so I wondered if there's a way to maybe encourage, like kindly remind restaurants that that's something that we have in place. I wasn't able to find anything on it. Um, but Pam, do you have anything?
It's not in the code. It was discussed at one time, but.
I believe it is in the code. So Mayor, is this a public comment? Do you have a move scheme?
Yeah.
Just to make that clear for prefer, uh, there is state law associated with, uh, you know, plastic bag prohibitions or also polystyrene foam, styrofoam prohibition, stuff like that, which, uh, are left up to the localities to enforce. We've put out communications on that run in the last few years. Uh, we can certainly look into that, but, uh, you know.
It's probably time for a reminder.
Yeah. Cause I don't, I don't think the last one we did was at some point in twenty twenty-four, we even put out a requirement to restaurants that based on what, what we have in state statute now.
Yeah.
But there is nothing in the town code. Michelle.
Thanks.
Thanks for bringing that up, Michelle.
Yeah, there's, if you look around, if you pay attention, there's a whole lot of plastic.
And I remember the conversation with you years ago.
Yeah, I thought so. So I don't know if that's something we want to revisit or just thought I'd put it out there.
Well, just to be clear, there's no, there's no prohibition of plastic. Silver. Yeah, that's what I just heard. But, uh, styrofoam. And then. Plastic bag, uh.
We, we have our own, we have our own bag.
We have our own back ordinance and then, you know, the state, state level has something in addition, but. I just want to mention that about utensils.
And then that the state, we should all look into what the state's doing with the provision responsibility legislation that's been like two or three years in, in the works. And it's coming, it's coming sooner or anybody who produces any merchandise materials in packaging that's either recyclable or not, will actually pay based on how recyclable it is. And that's, that's a really interesting, um, thing that's coming down the pipe. So, but I, I think it is probably time for another reminder to restaurants and. Retail shops and most of the retail shops, I think, are. Thanks for the reminder on that. Uh, now my apologies for not making clear that Michelle was making a public comment. She did ask me. Okay, anything, any other public comments? If not, we will go on to public requests and presentations. I know before it's request to close North Cora between railroad and roundhouse on August twenty eighth, between five and ten for the annual Bennett Forge Works block party. And it's got your name on it?
Yes. Which I'm going to do all the requests to close streets tonight. Um, this is an annual block party that's put on by Bennett Forge Works. It's being closed off the street at the south end of North Cora and run it to the brownies, brown road street. And they're going to do it this year on August twenty eighth from five to ten. There'll be food vendors there or eight, at least eight food vendors. And, uh, we'll put a stage up on the street for a bit.
Do we need separate motions for all three of these street closures?
Yeah.
They're different items.
Yeah.
Kind of just saying, I'm doing. Ready for a motion?
Um, first, we need to see if there's any comment up here. Any questions or comments?
It's a great party.
Yeah.
It's a fun, it's a fun time.
It's a community event. Nobody in the audience here on Zoom or here in the room have any questions or comments about it? No.
I made a motion that we approve the request to close North Cora between railroad and roundhouse on August twentieth, between five and ten. DM for the annual Bennett Forge Works block party. Second.
All right. Motion by Michelle, second by Paula. If you have a one call vote, please.
Councilor Scrambling.
I.
Kroger.
I.
Montague.
I.
Skyler.
I.
Scoville.
I.
Mayor for town Bacon.
I.
Right, that passes, um. The man's fleet six, six up. Um, I have number five, request to hold Ridgeway Rocks Music Festival, include five local bands, park on August twenty fourth. Could be a busy week from eleven AM to seven PM.
So this is a new event. And, uh, the person that is organizing it is, is Mark.
Sarah Tony.
Sarah Tony, he's not able to be here tonight. Um, I put into your packet the complete application form. He and I went through everything. Uh, I don't see anything in his application that it isn't consistent with what we've done in the park in the past. The timeframe that he's ending the event is at seven PM, so there shouldn't be a problem with sound application. And we talked about having porta potties and locking the restroom. He's just seeing it as a community event.
It's pretty.
Free and open to anyone who wants to come down.
And is it correct that any event that's held in the park has to be free?
Yes.
No.
Is it?
I don't think so.
That's not correct.
Well, the, the, the lead, the deed for, for Harville Park says that we can't, um, restrict people from coming. You, if you charge for an event, you have to do it in a way that allows others to come in without paying. You can, you can ask for donations or.
Why didn't we do the, uh, fire protection district concert that was roped up two years ago in summer?
It was, it was roped off for the alcohol.
Yeah, then.
There was ingress and egress.
No.
Tickets.
No, they had that, the alcohol was.
It's, it's why we let people come to it. Says W Valley and, and not, not buy it. We can charge, but we can't make everyone pay. There's something in the, in the Harville Park on the DD. They should be there.
Yeah, uh, when it was deeded to the town.
Yes.
Stricted that. And we've always taken that, um, one of the all.
Yeah, I remember that when, uh, years ago, the Michael Martin Murphy concert that, that, that it was the railroad museum or somebody else put that on and they charged tickets. But the way they did it is they just, if you paid to attend, you got a reserved seat up front, the first five rows. But if people could come for free, because we can't tell anybody they can't come in. It's sort of tricky that way. Anyway, back to the site. Um, other questions, comments? Does anybody know, Mark?
I do.
Do.
Yeah, I play, um, music with him sometimes. He's a great guy. I'm actually performing at this event. Need to ask you a question in a second. But, um, yeah, he's a great guy. He is a musician in Denver. He has a lot of connections with local musicians and is, um, getting some local Ridgway. Just wants to have a.
What's his connection to Ridgway?
It was you.
Does he have?
It was, yeah. Um, I would say his primary home is up on Mock Hill.
Okay.
Yeah, great guy.
Oh.
She'd be a good time. So if I'm performing at an event, do I need to recuse myself from those?
So I would tell you that that's your decision, right?
Correct.
To do the evaluation if there's, there's a conflict, you know?
I mean.
But it does sound like some potential, well, personal benefit.
Yeah. Happily, I'm going to accuse myself of this.
Yeah, usually it's just for, for everybody's reference.
Probably not.
Yeah. For everybody's reference, you feel like you have a conflict with anything that's on our agenda. You could state that conflict, explain what it is and on your, as, as both said, on your own, uh, thoughts, you could state whether you think it rises to the level of whether you should. Actually. Yes, I mean, it's always a good idea to state anything that you perceive as a conflict. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to accuse yourself. Is that stated correctly, both?
That is, uh, what, what Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments about this item in the room or on Zoom? Ridgeway Rocks Music Festival.
Ready?
Yep.
I move to approve the request to hold Ridgeway Rocks Music Festival featuring five local bands at Hatwell Park on August twenty fourth from eleven to seven.
Second. All right. Should by Michelle, second by Kevin, who will call votes.
Councilor Scrambling.
I.
Kroger.
I will recuse myself from this.
Montague.
I.
Skyler.
I.
Scoville.
I.
Mayor for town Bacon.
I.
All right. This is unanimously with one X, with refusal, I'm sorry. Um, that takes us to. The, um, request to close the street for, uh, the space to create mural, mural. June twentieth, next week.
All right. This is a request coming from the Pews community. And this request is to close the street between, uh, the neighborhoods. Yeah, it's, it's to close between Cora to the alley where that mural is located. And, um. It is on. He's, I, from four to seven.
And I'm guessing we, we're going to want to close it just past the valley so that the, the place in front of the mural is included in the space. But that's probably my thinking. Um, anybody else answer other questions about this item?
I'm going to see it going up.
It's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah.
She is a pro. Incredible question. She's, because of the weather being the way it's been this month, she's just working from dawn to dusk. And it's, she's staying at my house, you know, and, um, it's been really fun to see it, see it go up. She's amazing. Um, hearing no questions or comments up here. Anybody on Zoom or in the room have comments or questions? If not, I'm ready for lunch.
I move to approve the request to close North Clinton Street between Cora to the alley, including the alley.
It does show inclusion.
Thank you. For the space to create building on June twentieth from four to seven.
A second.
All right. Michelle's on her roll tonight. Motion by Michelle, second by Josie. Paula, vote call vote, please.
Councilor Scrambling.
I.
Kroger.
I choose to recuse myself from this. Thank you. That's a very good.
She's performing, but is she being paid?
Montague.
I.
Skyler.
I.
Scoville.
I.
Mayor for town Bacon.
I.
Right, question, Nancy, with one recusal. That brings us to number seven, proclamation declaring June is immigrant heritage month. Is Lauren, uh, either in the room or on Zoom?
Hi, this is Kai Sa. I'm representing Troy County for this proclamation.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Uh, you have anything you want to say? You're welcome.
I'm. Okay, thank you. I'm representing Troy County as well as Pride. And so I was just going to say a blurb after both of the proclamations, if that's okay.
Okay. Any questions from council on the seventh?
No, no, uh, question, but I am incredibly happy to declare this month immigrant heritage month. I think immigrants are people who are incredibly necessary. We are all ostensibly immigrants and on some level. And, uh. Dear Lord, let's keep promoting immigrants in this community.
Celebrating for their, right. Um, are there any comments in the audience, either on Zoom or in the room? Questions, comments? I'll move to approve the proclamation declaring June twenty twenty-five as immigrant heritage month.
Second.
All right. Motion by Terry, second by Paula.
Question.
Uh, we have to case.
I think you can discuss it once you've got a motion.
Of course.
Motion and second, yes, ma'am.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, is it just this year or is it June?
Does this one, it's here.
Okay. We do it every year.
Yeah, it's a nationally recognized, um, month, national, um, to, June is nationally recognized as immigrant heritage month. June is nationally recognized as immigrant heritage month, so. I know last year we've reached out to you about it. Um, I don't think the year before, but possibly the. Year before, before that. So twenty four and twenty two.
Would we wanna just take out the twenty twenty five and have it be June, or would we wanna redo it each year so that it's actually recognized?
We would do this every year, the same way we do with Pride, so that we're it to the fore.
We do last year by year, because things can change.
Okay, because otherwise, you forget that it's even there.
You know.
Right.
All right, thanks for that. Any other con, any other discussion appear? Local vote, please.
Councilmember Scrambling.
I.
Parker.
I.
Montague.
I.
Skylar.
I.
Scogo.
I.
And Mayor for Temple Lake.
I.
All right, passes unanimously. That brings us to. The proclamation supporting the fourth annual Yuri County Pride Celebration. You want to wait and make comments after we. Take action again?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, comments up here, questions? Because it's another one that we need to continue to.
Correct.
Take a stand and show that we support people who are um. Not as recognized as white people, to put it bluntly, um. Any comments in the room or on Zoom, not this one? Here, none of us for local votes.
Change under the motion.
Oh, sorry. I want us to motion, sorry.
I moved differently.
Jumped ahead, my sister.
June as, oh, as uh, the fourth annual Yuri County Pride Celebration and June as LGBTQIA two S plus. Month.
Second. All right, sorry about that. Motion by uh. Polly, second by Kevin, local votes.
Councilmember Scrambling.
I.
Parker.
I.
Montague.
I.
Skylar.
I.
Scogo.
I.
Mayor for Temple Lake.
Hi.
All right, passes unanimously. Sorry, I forgot my first name and I can't see it from here.
That's okay. Um, my name is Kai Sa Simon and I'm a member of the Yuri Pride. Committee as well as an employee of Tri County Health Network. We very, very much you both, you making both of these proclamations and taking the time to celebrate not only our LGBTQ plus. Community, but also our immigrant community members as well. Um, the conversations that we're having with our neighbors and the stories that we're sharing with our coworkers and friends really impact. Um, make an impact on acceptance and representation in our community. So having local governments. Also have these conversations and do actions like making proclamations uniquely position them to keep. That light trained on our towns and our cities and governments um. During, during the month of June as well as year round. So thank you very, very much for having the courage to be allies to these two communities. And know that you're like, it's seen and very much appreciated. I wanted to highlight that. Yuri County Pride will not be in June this year. We've changed it up and we're gonna be having our pride on August sixteenth. It'll be our fifth annual Yuri County Pride and it's gonna be a block party on Clinton Street. Followed by an after party at the Wright Opera House in Yuri. Um, in years past, we've really, really appreciated the symbolism and the opportunity to have the pride flag raised at the park. On the day of our event, I know that. The, this would likely take another motion and whatnot, but just something to consider. On the day of our event on August sixteenth this year, if it would be possible for us to raise the pride flag again, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you very much, um. So Kristen, do we need to uh, prove that the flag separately?
Maybe I'll be in the motion. Yeah, that's all right. Add this. verbally.
I, real quick before we did the thing, um. I just wanted to give a commendation to Chloe's for flying the pride flag out front. It's the only business we've seen. Flying it around town so far, and I just wanna give props where they are.
Thank you. So um, it sounds like the main question is just the flag, right? We've already passed the proclamations.
So the proclamation.
Yeah, we already did.
Yeah.
I make a motion to fly the pride flag in, in June on the. Town called August. On August?
August sixteenth.
Sorry, August sixteenth.
Just to amend this. No, it's a separate motion. Um, is there a second? Second. All right. Uh, motion made by Polly, actually, you hear the discussion?
Yeah, Mary, was there an additional date? To August sixteenth to fly the flag? That's embedded in the proclamation.
Oh, is it?
Be flown on August sixteenth.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah.
You can fly it June as well? Is that your?
She wanted it on the day of.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the.
Yeah.
Was on page two.
So.
In the past, we've done it on the day of Pride. Um, if you all would be interested in flying it in June. For, during Pride Month, that would be greatly appreciated as well, but we wanted just to. Ask since this has been the tradition to do it the day of our celebration.
Sorry.
That's in the proclamation.
Yeah, sorry for the question.
Yeah.
Catch that, um. Is there any interest in flying it for the month June?
Hey, I think it would be a good thing, but you know, we can.
You know, me and flags, I don't. I don't agree with.
Yeah, we talked about that with the earth flag and just the setting the precedent and does that. I, I felt like the earth flag represents everyone and when we start to go individual um, groups for a whole month. I want, that's gonna be more controversial. I have no problem with the day of the event. I questioned you in the whole one.
I agree.
I would push back, and I think this is actually different than the earth flag where I question, what does it actually mean? And given current climate, this flag means that if you belong to the LGBTQ. Plus community, you are welcome and loved in our community in a time where you're being persecuted. By our administration, so. A whole month, I don't know. I would like to see it flown in June, being that that is the National Pride Month at some point. If we pick a week, if we pick a day, I don't know. I just, I'm. I think it's really important to make that stand.
I agree.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Beth, and I um, I think there's a difference between flying it for a day or a week or a month or flying it. Uh, in perpetuity like we agreed to do with her, so um. Happy to discuss it more, um.
I, I agree, Michelle. I don't like the precedent of.
And just to be clear, I have no issues with the pride flag at all. Um, I, I'm not opposed to that. I just wonder about, do we, are we open this up to every organization that has a flag wanting to fly it? For a long period of time, is it? Like a first come, first served, you know, there's only, we can only, we can only fly so many flags, and I know there's not a lot of requests right now. But my concern is that the controversy around it may bring forward more flags, just putting it out there is something to consider.
And I will stake, and I know it's problematic, and I know it could be a problem for town, but if someone comes forward to fly a flag in spite of a pride flag. I don't have a problem saying no to that.
I think she's just saying it's a consideration to think about long term.
Yeah, I'm not saying in spite of the flag.
Well, I, I mean. I gotta say, I, I don't think we shouldn't be worried about precedent. I think we should, as the. I thought that the two young ladies from the youth council said it very eloquently. It's like, you got it, we're at a point in our history where we need to stand up for. And um. There, there's no such thing as a precedent, not something. We wanna make a statement about a um, underprivileged and. And actually um, attacked. Group of, of our citizens, um. We should be willing to do that, so I, I think it's, it's different.
I disagree this way. It's not a precedent. It is a precedent. So how does it become a precedent? I'm not against LGBTQ A plus like.
But.
But it is a precedent.
But Josie, Josie, how do you answer the precedent of not supporting the LGBTQ plus community?
Not about not supporting their, their community, just like Michelle said. I think it's just about whatever you're opening up to, like. All the different groups that could come forward and wanna fly a flag. I just don't agree with flying random flags. I like what I mean United States flag, the Colorado flag, I said that at the last meeting.
Like, what I'm saying is that.
Give your own personal home, your personal business to fly whatever.
I actually have a suggestion. What if we fly it? On June twenty eighth, which is the anniversary of the Stonewall riots? And we're not flying it the whole month, but we fly it in June because June is Pride Month. Because Stonewall was a protest and not a riot. And in support of attacks on the LGBTQ plus community, we split the difference.
Yeah, I mean, that I can get behind. I just think a month is a real.
Okay. That's made a compromise suggestion for June twenty eighth, is everybody.
Sounds good to me.
Still think we probably need a motion.
You, you've got a motion on the floor to fly it on August sixteen.
It's already, so, so who made that motion?
Well, we made it, Kevin said.
And on. June twenty eighth.
It's, it's already in the proclamation.
For August sixteen.
So I can just change it. Your motion is to fly it on twenty.
Moved, to move also on the twenty eighth.
Also.
Also.
Okay.
And Kevin, you're okay with that?
I'm good.
I second it. Okay. We're okay with that, but.
Yeah, as, as long as Pam's got it in the minutes.
Okay, all right. Um. So, so, so we have a motion and a second on the. Uh, flying the flag on June twenty eighth. Any other discussion up here? Uh, local votes.
Councilmember Scrambling.
I.
Parker.
I.
Montague.
I.
Skylar.
I.
Scogo.
Oh.
Mayor for Temple Lake.
I.
All right, thank you. They passed unanimously. Good discussion. Um.
Thank you very much for your solidarity, and um, if you all need a flag, we'd be happy to provide one. Just reach out to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Uh, I believe that is brings up the, is it the Colorado boy request?
Right, the request to close North Clinton Street between Cora and Laura on August second for. A community block party.
A block party is a song, it's good.
We're a good time of town.
John, do you wanna make your point about cutting it short of Laura? Because of the residences at Space to Create, you mentioned that at the last meeting?
Yeah, I, I think that is a really good point, um.
So I did talk to him about that. And there, he's been a stage up, and the stage is gonna go there.
Go there.
Um, it's in the space to go and the porta potties. Doesn't feel like you can reduce the side, the size of the closure.
He has a long pitch too.
Um.
Because the purpose of this meeting creates mostly.
And, and that reminds me, at the last meeting, you brought up John about um. Um, Pat asked me, why do we get asked if they could instead of going to Laura? Um, take it to. The front of the Space to Create building. And they are including. The decorum in their event, so they needed it. I don't even remember. But what, what, what party that was.
Was that the? Beautiful?
There were.
No, at the last meeting, you asked me to talk to the people who made the application. To do that, and they said, oh, we're using the decorum, so I said.
Is that that? The other question is, it's till midnight. Does that have a problem with town or fences?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm not. Well, and two things, the, the midnight thing is definitely a point. His drawing, we, we need more detailed drawings than this, is the way he's. Drawn this, it says stage in porta potties. And that actually shows that it's posed between Cora and Laura. And the stage is like at the alley, it's based on scale. But it says right.
But, but when we talked about it, you said that's where the stage, so they go across. I, I rather that.
Okay, I, I'm not gonna be able to support this because there are people living on the ground floor of Space to Create. That will be especially going to midnight, um. Really adverse to a perpetual, as soon as you can. I don't think we can have that. Maybe we need, um. My name, obviously, I'm just stating my opinion, and I don't get a follow, so um, I agree with you.
They, they counsel. I think we could tell Matt to change it, um, and this is in August, so. We just tell him to change the plan.
We can approve it conditionally. I mean, I feel like we've got plenty of events where the stage was essentially at the alley from the gates. Um, and even, even if it's closed all the way to Laura, um, that there's no. Loud music or anything any closer than, than the alley. We've had huge crowds there just in that half block, um.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Does the town have a noise ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
What time?
Um, I don't, is it time related to its decimal? That was down. It's not.
There was a change at ten o'clock.
Cause like the music in the perk was.
Decibel, it's.
It's a fa, it's a factor, so it's looking at decibels and then it's looking at time.
Is it? Is it? Event time, you know, midnight, as in like, that's what the closure needs to be? Because of.
I think that was already sagged down. He's getting up, he's breaking down.
So the event will probably end at ten for towns.
Ten, twelve is breakdown.
But then ten to twelve is breakdown.
I.
Is my interpretation of it.
Well, I think, just to summarize, I think we can make a conditional. Motion. To um. Put them, it sounds like where the stage can go and how long music could last. Even if he's open, even if he wants it closed till midnight, so. Clean up.
Cause it says this ages in front of the Sherbino and Kates.
So I just wanna make it clear that. We can. We can put conditions on approval or we can deny. It's up to us.
We're trying to get. Conditionally, because I'm sure he's got a lot of limited pieces of work, so.
So, I'm not against doing, actually, we need.
And he's gonna be fine.
One more details isn't a bad habit.
Guys, I don't know if I'm ridiculous, where is this?
So it's not clear. There was proposed between Cora and Laura.
Okay, is it, is it digitally somewhere, anywhere, or am I just flying blind here?
Living on paper.
No.
That's fine, that's fine. I, I, I can do this mentally. I got it.
Drop that into the agenda.
Okay. I, I heard that, I just didn't know if it was added somewhere.
The application's a little confusing, as it says the stage is, is in front of Sherbino and Kates, which. Are not directly cost to see from each other. Kates is on the corner of the alley, so Kates would be across from the chiropractor.
Maybe we do a conditional approval based on their map layout or something? And, and description of timing.
Well, maybe.
Yeah, I, I think we can.
Might to be.
Yeah, I think we can literally say. Where we want the stage to be, no further than, and the way they want the music to pass in the alley. And then we don't want any music past ten o'clock. Perfect.
Love.
Well, I move to conditionally approve the application for special event agreement for the Colorado boy for their block party on August second, May twenty five. With the condition that the stage will be no further than the alley and music will be done by.
Seven. Well.
No.
Right, right.
Music done by ten PM.
Thanks.
And no further west than. Check, okay with that.
West.
Um.
Second.
All right, um. Motion made by um, Josie, second by Michelle. New discussion. Uh. Local votes.
Councilmember Scrambling.
I.
Parker.
I.
Montague.
I.
Skylar.
I.
Scogo.
I.
Mayor for Temple Lake.
All right, thank you, that passes unanimously. Um, that brings us to, was there anything else that you added, Pam, under? Holy process?
No.
No, okay. Public hearings, we have three tonight, yeah. Number nine, application for a tavern liquor license at two fifty one Liddell Drive. Members and shareholders of OT Hospitality LLC. Hunter Orwood and Seth Taylor. Doing business as the town, the Adobe and Pam.
Yes, well, the town has received an application for a tavern liquor license from OT Hospitality LLC. As you said, the members are Seth Taylor and Hunter Orwood. And they are leasing the premises at two fifty one Liddell Street, the trade name when we moved in. That was the name of the establishment when it had a liquor license before. The applicant is leasing the premises from the current owner, Urban Pack Aker LLC. And it will be licensed to encompass the east side of the at the edge of the building encompassing the existing patio courtyard on the west side of the building and along the south side for our city. And the applicants are here from having a preference.
Said he says something.
Yeah. Say you guys, say you guys.
Yeah.
Ask anything you want to add. What's the plan?
What you doing?
Are you keeping the sauce?
Uh my name's Hunter Orwood. Um grew up here up the street and uh got back in twenty twenty and saw this place sitting there that I grew up uh spending time with my family at. So, you know, Seth, my buddy here, we worked in hospitality for twenty years um straight and from here to New York to Mexico to Spain and L A and, you know, I'm back home and we've been working for about ten months on this deal to make sure that we bring the building back up and make it a beautiful place for the community. And uh the deal that we've carved out is non-traditional. It's not just the lease. Uh we have a purchase option on the property and we want to make sure that all the work that we do there uh lasts for another thirty years. So, you know, thanks for your time and uh yeah, I know a lot of people, including family and friends and people in the area. Uh it, there's a lot of buzz about the place and uh I just want to say that it's for real this time, so. Thank you, thank you.
And I thought I recognized your name, I think. I was here when you were here last too.
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I have a question for Pam, I believe, which is um there's different types of liquor licenses, it looks like, and this is a tavern license. Do all liquor licenses require food to be served?
Yes, it it just depends on the table license. So a tavern licenses uh can be snacks.
With Colorado requires food if there's.
A restaurant requires a specific amount of food to be sold while the business is open.
And do you guys plan on having food? You don't if you don't want to tell anyone yet, you can tell me you're not.
No, we're we're, we love food. We're obsessed with food. Um there, they got pre-approved to serve food last year because we were at party there and we saw the postings and everything. But uh it does need, we we need an on-ramp. We need to really build out a kitchen that we want to build that's gonna serve you know, special occasions and and having large parts of the community there on the property. So we're gonna do everything we can to get really fun, creative food there right away when we open. And then slowly, you know, trying to have those things as we go along, so.
Place keeps a lot.
That's great.
Yeah, it it does. We're we're really aware of every shot. Most of you tell us at this point.
There you are, yeah.
Are you running the the rooms as well? The F and B side of things?
Once we exercise a purchase option agreement, then yes, our our operating agreement would extend to the whole brand, the rooms uh and all that. But right now, what we carved out is just to get the F and B going, build out the kitchen, update the bar, uh you know, everything up to up to stop.
So your question there is the rooms are being rented out under another.
The rent. Yeah, and then the gal running those not too long, so cool.
Um yeah, so this since this is a public hearing, I will open up to public comment now, see if anybody in the room on Zoom wants to weigh in, weigh in. One once, come twice. Right, I will close the public comment section of public hearing and bring you back a period of worship.
Ready for motion? I move to approve the application for tavern liquor license at two fifty one Liddell Drive. Members and shareholders of OT Hospitality LLC, Hunter Orahood and Seth Taylor, D V A, the Adobe and. Second.
All right, motion by Michelle, seconded by Pauline. We'll call votes.
Councilmember Scrambling.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Montague.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Scoville.
Hi.
Mayor for Town Lincoln.
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations and good luck.
Yeah, we're excited. You haven't submitted like a shooting to try to open or?
Oh, God.
I know, it's a big question.
October twenty sixth.
Will be longer than a game.
We might be able to get in there sooner than they, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, there's a lot of work to be done.
Yeah.
And we have a big vision for it.
Awesome.
And if you guys want to do it right, we understand that's gonna take some time.
Yeah.
Yes, good luck to you.
Thank you.
That's all we want.
Yeah. Very exciting. Thank you. That brings us to item number ten, another public hearing. Application Ridge Six Town Homes P U D final plat, location two thirty, two eighty three North Cora Street, lot sixteen through twenty, block twenty eight. Zone to start residential applicant Matthew. Matt McIsaac, North Cora Street LLC, owner, North Cora Street LLC, Kara. Preston, are you taking this one?
Uh we have Angie on Zoom.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. Hi, um Preston, can you let me share my screen? There we go.
You should be able to.
Thank you. Sorry for not being there in person today. Apologies. Um so yes, this project is a quarter block of the historic residential zone. Lot sixteen through twenty of block twenty eight. Um there is an existing home on the site at two eighty three.
Starting around, can you um go full screen with your your presentation?
Oh. I, okay. Is it sharing my?
It's it's going all that, I mean, if you can go into go into slideshow.
Slideshow mode or whatever it's called.
Okay, I had it in slideshow mode, so I wonder why.
We may be seeing presenter presenter's screen.
Oh. Hmm, uh just one second.
Technology, gotta love it.
Gotta love it. Any luck?
Looks the same um.
Okay.
If you.
That's so weird.
We have it right there.
Hmm.
Do we have her presentation?
I have it uh as a PDF, so I'll just do that. And you can tell me if that's any better.
Under the slideshow menu, just did let you go into slideshow mode?
Yeah, it was taking me to slideshow mode. It's just weird. You guys couldn't see it.
Yeah, it's it's that presenter mode. It's like your opposite. You're probably seeing slideshow.
Oh. Okay, learning something new every day. Um. Let me, I'm sorry. Let me go back.
Montague to B M, that's okay too.
Okay, so slideshow. Or you want me to go to, okay, different thing, pre- presenter, let's see.
From the beginning.
From the beginning. Does that work?
No, but you're seeing.
It's working. It's so weird. It's working for me.
Yeah, that's like I said, it and it's probably too much trouble to try and actually uncheck use presenter view.
Mary, Mary, I can just zoom.
Where is that?
Here, I think we could just.
Okay, all right, all right, that's good. We're good.
Okay, no, I unchecked it. Okay, let's try this. Did it work?
No.
Well, Preston zoomed in.
Preston, you do, did, so we're okay.
Okay. Okay. So I also have it as a PDF. So I can just, let me just try that really quick. I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
Spent time on this. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you. Um so I was on this slide. It's a quarter block in the historic residential zone. There is an existing home at two eighty three North Cora. Pictured here. Um. The owner is North Cor- Cora Street LLC. I'm not sure if Matt is in the room. Is Matt McIsaac present?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Awesome. Um. So the preliminary plat was granted conditional approval on August of twenty, in August of twenty twenty two. And since then, the public improvements have all been installed. On May twenty first, twenty twenty five, the planning commission recommended approval with conditions, which I've carried over into the staff recommendation that's coming up in a few slides. Um the request is for the subdivision of one existing lot to be divided into seven. One will retain the existing home. Um the home site also retains its development potential as a single-family lot in historic residential, so they could add another unit of density there. Um. But the other six lots can are going to be developed as attached townhomes. And the townhomes are going to be separately metered, have their own yard space. Um so the development team actually opted to create a party wall agreement that discusses how the shared property, which is the party wall, is to be handled, so no H O A will be needed to be established um with this model, and that's why you don't see any of the like C C N Rs or H O A materials in your packet. Future land use map designates this area as town core neighborhoods. Um the master plan explains that this area is suitable for uh single-family homes duplexes uh and also a range of higher density housing types such as town home homes and smaller multifamily buildings. Um accessory dwellings are also encouraged where they're permitted. And new development should respect the scale and character of existing development in the area. Under, this is being processed under the previous Ridgeway Municipal Code. So these are the sub subdivision procedures for that project, for this project. Um the code outlines the required improvements, uh the design standards and also explains that the project needs to be in conformance with the master plan. And there's more on that in your staff report. So the hearing item has been properly noticed. Um at the planning commission hearing, we did receive two supporting public comments. I just wanted to mention that here. Um those were read into the record, but we didn't receive any additional comments for this hearing. Um. So the staff recommendation is the same as the planning commission recommendation. Uh we recommend approval with the following three conditions. Prior to the town recording, the final plat with the Erie County Clerk and Recorder's Office, all remaining excise tax tap fees and other fees shall be paid by the developer. Um prior to the town recording, the final plat, all clerical, grammatic, technical and procedural non-material amendments to the application materials be made as necessary to ensure the ability to enforce and administer the provisions pursuant to the Ridgway Municipal Code standards. And then finally. And then finally, I don't know what that was. Um the plat shall be modified to include clear language to identify ownership and maintenance um and repair of the stormwater system that's been installed on site. And that was a request that came from town engineering, and I believe Matt has that underway. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Angie. Again, this is a public hearing, so um any questions from up here for Angie or staff members? Hearing none. Matt, do you want to add anything? No. Okay. It's pretty straightforward. Um. All right, since again, it's public hearing, I won't hear from public comment to anyone either in the room or Zoom. Uh. Everybody have anything you want to add or ask questions about?
Matt, I s- I see a gas line in there. So gas being.
Gas being, this is, your timer's off.
We're taking.
Public commentary.
I'm sorry.
Um. So uh I'm not hearing any public comments, so I will close the public comment period and bring it back up here for discussion. So Terry, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you were planning on, looks like there's a gas light.
There's no gas.
There is.
Okay, um. Other comments, questions, or is there a motion?
I move to approve the final plat for Ridge Six Town Home Subdivision. I'll plan the unit development, the following conditions. Finding compliance with the regulations of the municipal code and general conformance with the master plan with the three amendments there.
Second.
All right. Uh thank you. Motion by Kevin, seconded by Pauline. Uh we'll call votes.
Councilmember Scrambling.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Montague.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Scoville.
Hi.
Mayor for Town Lincoln.
Hi.
Great, thank you. That passed me nicely. There you go, Matt. You're welcome. Um that takes us to the final public hearing for tonight. Number eleven, application, Dalwini Sketch Plan and Preliminary Plat. Application Dalwini Athletic Park Annexation, Zone General Commercial and Residential. Applicant Chris Hawkins for Alpine Planning LLC, Dalwini Group LLC, care of Michael Cox. Andrew, are you taking?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. So the Dalwini addition, as you all know, it's a recently annexed piece of land consisting of about uh three point two three acres. Sorry, the scale on this is a little off. Um off of County Road twenty three, south of Chupita Drive and south of the athletic park. Um this area is currently considered multiple parcels, so the triangular parcel that you'll see on your screen um is a piece that's owned by the town. Uh it's zone general commercial, which is consistent with the zoning of the athletic park property. On the east side of County Road twenty three, the annexed land is zone residential, um which is consistent with the portion of property to its immediate north. It's an area known as the Preserve P U D. Uh finally, the third parcel includes the right of way, which is not zoned. So this is a screenshot from the annexation map. It shows the town-owned property um as parcels C and B. And then parcel A is the portion owned by the applicant. Um parcel parcel A is an important piece to further the development at the Preserve, um which has received conditional preliminary plat approval. And the developers proposed that parcel A is the location of a sanitary sewer lift station um to serve the future residential lots, but that um neither of these pieces will be used for residential development, so there's no residential density at these lots. Uh this is the Preserve P U D. Um. Scre- screenshotted, and then I kind of flagged with little stars where these pieces are. So the request is for a review of the preliminary plat for the Dalwini annex portion of the property. Um the intent is that this portion of the project area will get caught up to the previously conditionally approved Preserve preliminary plat, P U D, so that the project can be furthered. Um. There is gonna be a very robust review upcoming with condition compliance and final plat for the Preserve. But this is uh hoping to kind of, this is part of condition compliance, really. They need to add a sewer lift station, and so they needed to annex this piece.
Yeah, this is just the final timing up of of the loose ends that were created when we had to do the annexation. So.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I do have a lot of background on this. I know you guys are kind of familiar with this, but I'll just run through it really quick. Um this is, a lot of it's relating to the larger project, the Preserve. So at this moment, the development team has until September fourteenth of twenty twenty six to comply with all the conditions of approval. Uh basically, what's happened is there's been a series of extensions of the the approval so that they could comply with conditions. So this kind of lists those. Um the original approval was in two thousand and six, but then it was sort of revived in twenty eighteen. And then the most important pieces here are that the um Dalwini piece, the annexation piece was done via ordinance oh six twenty twenty four at the end of twenty twenty four. And then on May twenty first, the planning commission approved the sketch plan for this project and recommended approval of the Dalwini Annex Subdivision Preliminary Plat. So this is the preliminary plat. Uh the full version is included in your packet. Um it shows the right-of-way parcel. Preserve Drive is to be dedicated to the town. It shows lots one and two, neither of which will have um will be available for residential development. Uh and then lot three to the west is owned by the town. So the master plan future land use map uh had to be modified when this area was manne- uh annexed. And the portion that the development team owns was classified as single-family neighborhoods, which is consistent with the Preserve piece. And then the part that's town-owned was um classified as parks and natural area. So under, as I mentioned with the Ridge Six project, under the previous Ridgway Municipal Code, um there's this subdivision procedure. But I want to point out that for this, if this project wasn't tied to the larger development, it would have been processed as a minor subdivision. So a different process here, so we're trying to be procedurally consistent. And then here are those approval criteria for a minor subdivision. So it conforms to all applicable requirements for zone district, uh substantially conforms to applicable requirements of the code, ordinances and resolutions, and it's consistent with the master plan. So staff recommendation. So staff recommendation again is the same as uh Planning Commission recommendation. And uh, we did add, or I did add that it meets the criteria of a minor subdivision under our current code, which is housed in seven five two D. Um, so yeah, the recommendation is for approval. And the recommended motions on the screen. That's all I have. Thank you. And I believe Chris is present.
Yeah, thanks Angie. Um, first off, up here, anybody on council have questions for staff or any staff on this one? Pretty straightforward.
I'm really impressed with how much everyone is stuck with this process and putting all the pieces together, like very.
Yeah.
It's been a process.
It's been a process. Alright, so I will um give Chris opportunity to weigh in if you want.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, uh, Chris Hawkins with Alpine Planning. Uh, first off, thank you for everyone and your help on this. It has been a bit of a path. Um, I'm going to need to give you a little bit of a backstory. We're on the second round of civil engineering plan revisions for the whole subdivision. And it's been a voluntary effort to upgrade the subdivision design to meet the current infrastructure standards. Um, the town adopting the infrastructure standards on a times of blur, I'm going to say within the last five years, five years ago. I'm sure it was longer than that though. Um, and that that just takes time. Um, we've submitted those plans, we've submitted the lift station design to the town engineering department. Those are all getting reviewed right now. Uh, we stopped and submitted lift station application to the state. Um, and there's a lot of missing parts and pieces and it's falling in line. Um, and you've seen this process go on. Um, our our goal is to get this going this summer, absolutely, but we have to all get together in agreement with the town staff before we proceed with construction, pre-construction meetings, uh, phasing plans because that's a busy county road. Um, will have to be closed. I don't know. I mean, there's all that stuff we have to work through. I'm tuning this up a little bit because September of next year is not that far away. Um, and so we may be back and request an extension. Um, and I, we sincerely hope you're open to that, given that sincerity and the progress we've made. It's something I didn't want to have to ask for, but where we're at today. We'll know more because Skip Houston, uh, who did uh Charles's light industrial subdivision. That company is putting in a bid and we're going to get a schedule probably in the next two weeks or so. And we'll know more, but I just wanted to kind of say that, but thank you very much. And I also wanted to thank you, your honor, for your testimony and your recent hearing regarding our community. I really appreciate you standing up for women and women's rights. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, yeah, and I just, a quick side note for those of you who are newer to the community, this subdivision was first um introduced around two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, and went through a whole bunch of infrastructure installation, roughed in the roads, and then the recession hit in two thousand and bottom dropped out of everything, and that's why this has been lingering all this time. I give a lot of credit to Dalwini for picking up this subdivision, pretty much just um, almost out of goodness of their hearts. Um, and looking at, I believe, using it for employee housing for the for their operation, it was partially. And so it's, not only is it just this process of fixing the annexation issue and actually fixing the little triangle property that was part of it, the, um. Yeah, thought it feels, that's been a thing all by itself, but this whole process has been well over a decade of efforts that have, um. I'm, I'm just glad to see we're not sitting on it, partially done subdivision is coming, it's actually going to happen. So that's, that's exciting. Um, that wasn't inappropriate in the public hearing, but I think, I think we're okay with, um. We uh are now uh opening it up for public comment from anybody in the room or on Zoom who has comments about this. Come once, go twice, close the public comment and bring it up here for donation.
Goodness of their hearts. I, I don't know about that one. Um, but I don't know the history, but that seems like a stretch, maybe. Uh, but I'm willing to make the motion if you're ready.
Ready with me, of course.
I major recommend approval preliminary plat for the Dalwini Annex Subdivision Finding Compliance.
You wouldn't have to recommend, it's just approval. My apologies if that's in the motion.
No, Michelle's just used to recommending.
Nobody says that unless I'm on the front.
You're interrupting.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the packet, I thought. Uh, I move to approve the preliminary plat for the Dalwini Annex Subdivision Finding Compliance with the regulations of Municipal Code and general conformance with the master plan and RMC criteria.
Second. Alright, motion by Michelle, second by Terry. No call, no please.
Councilmember Scrambling.
Hi.
Parker.
Hi.
Montague.
Hi.
Skyler.
Hi.
Skogo.
Hi.
Mayor for Town Lake.
Blake.
Hi.
Thank you. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Chris. Thanks Michael.
Thanks Michael.
Thank you so much.
Hey Mayor, I, I agreed with you that it's been a long time coming. I know I've brought this up before. Especially when we've had preliminary plats extended as long as this potentially might be. I don't want to add extra burden to applicants, but at least a public posting. Um, because the community often has largely turned over when things have been going on for a decade or more. Um, I, I don't know if that's something we need to change in code, but I, I just want to put a pin in that again.
And you're talking about.
Just when we do, when we do extensions to preliminary plats, um, that at some point enough time has elapsed that the community that was there when it was posted, because we don't post on renewals, just on initials. Um. That the community be notified at some level.
I.
I can expect her, but.
It's pressing. We do post on.
We do? Okay.
Extension requests.
Okay. Okay, maybe I was just mistaken, sorry.
There's also been a sign out there this whole time about the subdivision, so if people are curious, then check in.
Yeah, stuff like, stuff like that fades into the background and then no one even thinks about it anymore. Okay, never mind.
No, I almost take your comment as is, is a good idea from from staff standpoint of just, especially with these things that have lingered for whatever reason. Um, this is, this is a really unusual circumstance, go lingering as long as it has. But just maybe even a page on the website that describes the history of the project so that people understand why it's lingered so long and where it is now. Um, Angie, I don't know if that's something that makes sense to you or not. Um. Seems like it'd be logical for, for you um to be doing that. Um, and if it's it's above and beyond the call of duty, that's okay too, but it just seems like an interesting way to kind of address this concern.
Well, like it came up when we did the um industrial park piece, and suddenly we had a whole new neighborhood in Wetterhorn that what didn't exist when that preliminary plat was initially created. Um, and in some way of engaging folks who now live in the community versus, you know, we're here when things were approved eight, ten, fifteen years ago, feels important. Not, not to like undermine my earlier comment about sticking with it, but just making sure we're keeping everyone engaged who maybe wasn't there from the beginning.
No, it's a good point. Thanks. Thanks Chris.
You.
Alright, that takes us to policy matters. I have number twelve, new discussion intervention on one. Ordinance number oh three twenty twenty-five, establishing Ridgway Municipal Code Section seven dash seven. Affordable Housing Regulations and Amending seven dash nine dash two general definitions to define community housing. And two, Community Housing Guidelines, a document complementing the Affordable Housing Regulations. Angie, take it away.
Thank you. So this item's intended to give town council an opportunity to review the materials that have come out of a lot of work at the Planning Commission. Um, the packet includes ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty-five. Um, it also includes our complimentary document that's intended to work hand in hand with the potential code language in the ordinance. Um, that's titled The Community Housing Guidelines, but it's also referred to just as guidelines or the guidelines throughout your packet materials. Um, and I've included a draft deed restriction and covenant in your packet for consideration. So some background, the RMC Section seven seven is reserved for affordable housing regulations. The strategic plan also calls for this code section to be established. Um, I believe we put it in there in the twenty twenty-four strategic plan, but then it's been carried over to twenty twenty-five as well. And several work sessions were held at the Planning Commission regarding various ideas for the establishment and retention of affordable housing um that's suitable for Ridgway. So I'll kind of give a little more history about that. Twenty twenty-four Affordable Housing Planning to date um is shown on your screen right now. So town planning, which includes work by me as well as our contracted uh planners at Community Planning Strategies, or CPS as it's shown on the screen, um, has conducted a ton of research resulting in a variety of work sessions, facilitated discussions, trainings, um, and updates for the Planning Commission on housing topics. And this has all been in an effort to create and codify affordable housing regulations. So I bolded the meetings that really started establishing the ideas that are here before you. Um, but we've explored a bunch of ideas. Uh, the meetings that aren't bolded were really important groundwork and explored some of the different ways to require affordable housing. So here's um some from twenty twenty-five. Uh, guided by the Planning Commission and our master plan, these work sessions were held uh to refine the drafts that are before you. And we looked at different ways to get the drafts out to the public as well. Um, we did a direct referral and an open house. Um, and then most recently, we brought these materials to the Planning Commission in a notice public hearing for a text amendment, which is part of the process to adopting new code. So let's dig into what's in the materials, um, what they do and how and why they were designed in the way that they are set up. So here we're looking, we're kind of talking about an inclusionary housing policy, um, which is really just one piece of a housing program. And inclusionary housing policies are meant to create mixed income developments and increase economic inclusion. So we use this framework shown on the screen um to help us design the policy, but made sure that it was designed to local conditions. Um, and that's to the extent that we are able to understand local conditions. So each of these components was considered as part of the process of designing the policy. So I'm going to dig into those. First, uh, just a note on terminology. Community housing was a term that we explored so we could create a definition um of housing that was restricted in some way to be affordable and to meet the unique needs of Ridgway residents and workforce, but also to allow for flexibility in our AMI, that's our area median income targets. So we can meet different um levels of affordability. And then, let's see. So I have the definition of community housing here. Um, and then I'm going to get into the program structure a little bit. So what we did was we created a piece to be codified, which is the RMC Section seven seven. And then a piece that's not going to be codified, um, that's the community housing guidelines that work with the code, but are not in the code. That allows us to be a little more dynamic and hit different AMI targets and change things around a little bit um as we see this kind of roll out. If that makes sense without actually doing text amendments and code changes and ordinances. Um. So let me get into that a little bit. So the requirement is for ten percent of units or lots to be dedicated as community housing. And then this is applicable to market rate residential development of three or more units or lots. And then, go ahead.
Right, so that means that if you have three units, one must be affordable or community housing?
Um, no, so there, sorry, there is um some confusion about like the uh fractional requirement.
Yeah.
And that is addressed in here, but it's, it's through a different me- means of compliance, so um. This program offer, offers multiple means of compliance. And for fractional, there's some op- options for you, so like fee and lieu is one of them.
Okay.
Um, I. Yeah.
Thank you.
I will go over those shortly. Uh, so anyways, let's see. Uh, I lost my spot here. Okay, so part of this includes the requirement to submit a community housing plan. So this is a new submittal requirement um that I recommended, including, because some of these like multiple ways to comply, and then also the incentives that I'll also jump into, um, are a little hard to track. So basically, uh, the community housing plan needs to be submitted by the developer discussing how it meets the requirements, how the project meets the requirements. Um, so the developer can come, can propose uh doing multiple compliance methods. Um. And yeah, one is fee and lieu, one is land in lieu. Um. You can do a mix of those things, and I'm realizing my notes don't have that, but my staff report does, if you want to go to that page. Um, and then the incentives. We are offering some potential incentives for developers who exceed the requirements. And they'd also be, they'd also have to explain that in their community housing plan, how they exceed requirements, what incentives they're looking for, why their project qualifies them for that incentive. Um, those are also listed in your staff report. So I'm not able to see everybody in the room, I can switch my screen, is everybody following this so far or have any questions right now? Because I can pause here and then get into a little bit more, if we're comfortable, I can move on.
Uh, questions, any questions?
Sound great, Andrew.
Okay. And I'm just going to read the um incentives and the multiple means of compliance. Assuming that I have them here. So compliance has been split up into two different sections in your staff report. There's general compliance, and that's where the applicant needs to provide um, the number, the right number of units that makes them uh meet the requirement. And then there's alternative compliance, and that includes providing the required housing off-site, dedicating land within the project, providing lots in lieu, uh, providing fee in lieu, or meeting a steeper affordability target, so a lower AMI percentage um for community housing units, or other acceptable means of compliance. And then you can also mix these up. So that's going to be helpful for folks who are feeling creative. Um, but something to note here, in the guidelines and the code, there's specific things that would allow you to do this, so you can't just like offer fee and lieu if you're if you need, if you can, if you don't have a fractional requirement, you can't just say, here's a bunch of money, you have to actually provide the unit. And there's also requirements about where the unit can be located. Um, it has to pretty much be the same as the other units that you're building. If that makes sense. And then the incentives, um, those are contained in the guidelines, and they only apply to the projects that are voluntarily, voluntarily exceeding the requirements. So those include some sort of increased development potential. We talked about it uh as like a lot coverage. Um. Increase, and then there's town fee deferment, we're already doing that. Um, reduction or waiver. And then also some flexibility with landscape regulations, and then finally expedited processing. So, go back to my. So that covers all of these components. I just talked through each of these in the framework graphic. Um, there's a lot more detail provided in your packet, and we wanted to give you some time to mull that over, but um. I also want to mention that a really important component to introducing new policy is community engagement and outreach. So we've conducted some community engagement related to this. So we've conducted some community engagement related to this topic and the program, the housing program in general. Um, so in twenty twenty five, we've had an agenda item. And posted notice for a housing topic at nearly every planning commission meeting. Uh, we had work sessions in twenty twenty four as well that were noticed. We hosted a community conversation, public open house event um in March. And I have a couple of materials from that on the next slides. And then we also sent out some earlier drafts of seven, seven and the guidelines. Um, in a package for a direct referral, and that went out to some local developers, real estate professionals. Um, land use and planning professionals, as well as some local entities that work in housing development and financing. So this is the flyer from the community conversation event. Um, it was open to all, marketed widely and fairly well attended. Um, these are some examples of the many boards, educational boards that we had at the event. Um, which discussed housing broadly, but these boards were specifically focused on seven, seven and the guidelines. So, in conclusion, staff is seeking direction from town council on the next steps. Specifically, I would be interested in knowing how much time the council would, the council would like to have with the materials before. Um, they consider the ordinance for introduction at first reading. Um, whether we maybe need like a work session or some other extension of what I covered today. Or if we need some further public engagement or outreach. And thank you so much for your time and thoughts.
Thanks, Angie, this is uh simple deal. Just a lot of work this guy. Um. Michelle and I on planning mission have been through all this already, and um I feel like we've put in a lot of good work on it. And basically now, as she said, we're just asking council to um weigh in. See how much time everybody feels like they need to kind of digest it before we introduce the ordinance on three twenty five. And whatever discussion you want to have, whatever, you want to have another public outreach. Or you know, community to weigh in on this um. Since this is kind of come out of the meetings we've already had, it'd be good to, I think it'd be good to give. Well, the community an opportunity to weigh in, um, what do you all think?
I think that's a great idea. I had just a couple of questions about the um nitty gritty of it. Um. I'm trying to, I've been trying to find where there was some discussion within. The actual guts of um ADUs and I can no longer find it. Um. I I saw that there was like some. Oh.
Yeah, I I know what you're, I think I know what you're talking about here. Um, so we decided to include that ADUs could be used as um a community housing unit. As long as it meets the criteria for like amenities, size, um, things like that. So if it's like a similar size and quality as a another unit that's being built. So it doesn't have to be onsite necessarily, um, but that it was an option.
Perfect, thank you.
That's what you were getting at.
That was what I was looking at, and I I think I misunderstood it, thinking that someone could put an ADU on their. Um, community housing uh dwelling. And then I was confused, like, can they long term rent that, can they short term rent it, is that like a? How does that work? But I think that's not a possibility, but I want to make sure that we're kind of all on the same page with that.
Yeah, there'd have to be some pretty specific circumstances to allow them to use. An ADU as their community housing uh means of compliance, I guess. Um, the unit set aside as as community housing. I I would have to kind of dig through and find out exactly what those are, but um. Yeah, there's like location requirement, size requirement, um. And then there's also a a bunch of language about. How's, like if something. If a developer can produce this, the units offsite, so separate from their. Development that's that's triggering this requirement. Um, there's some really specific reasons why that would happen. And a lot of them have to do with just. Um. I think a lot of them have to do with like how the rest of the project. Or how how the neighborhood is set up, I I'd have to look through again, apologies, but.
Worries.
Yeah, there's specific criteria around offsite, providing units offsite.
Yeah, there, it's the um, I'm looking at it, I don't see the page, there's not a page number. Um, but there are some pretty specific things. Yeah, there's a lot here. My my take would be we need some sort of community forum. That's kind of educating on the document, because if I envision. Public comment on this complex thing. Some examples, I'm a big fan of, you know, here's what this would look like if there was a fifteen unit. Um, development, here's the ways they could achieve compliance potentially. Um. Kind of similar in format to the conversation that we had, just so people have some more info.
What was the, what was the sensor, the temperature coming out of that conversation? Is there any um significant pushback or any perceived controversy? You know, what suggests we need more of the same?
Um, so a couple of things. I was manning this sort of area of the event, but. Not a lot of people approached me to talk about this specific thing. Um, I did let folks know that it was underway, and it's like one of the things that town is working toward. Um, and then I also had copies of the drafts that were current then. Um, I think the director for all I got some some comments on like. Um, rural homes commented, they provided some information about like. Just how AMI data is not necess- like AMI targets are a little hard to establish. Um, because the data is not great, but we're also conducting a housing needs assessment this summer. Or this year, I should say. Um, so we'll have a lot more information to like fill in any gaps that might be. Uh, coming out of this, this is sort of an incremental approach to. Affordable housing requirements. Um. Yeah, I don't, I think people were happy that we were doing something is ultimately the feedback I got from the community conversation event.
I got, when are you going to serve my specific um situation a few times there?
Yeah.
Which is kind of why I think, I think when people came, it was more what is happening? What could happen versus the nuts and bolts of what this document looks like? Um, which is why I suggested something kind of specifically around. What would this look like, what would this do for? Including affordable housing or community housing in development in Ridgeway. Kind of.
Yeah, I.
Kind of an answer to those Facebook comments you see like, oh, more million dollar townhomes. Like.
Yeah, I mean, this is comprehensive enough that I think you're right, I think. The average citizen is going to want to see some examples and understand how it. Actually affects potential development going forward, and I I think even to the point of saying. Let's pick out some scenarios, vacant quarter blocks in the commercial district and some. They can quarter blocks in the residential district and kind of pencil out how. How it could work depending on how many units somebody wanted to build. Um, have some concrete examples.
That's great, I love scenario planning.
And I'll offer my two cents, uh, the direct referral piece was great, it was a good way to get. Uh, some some direct feedback, as Angie said, from from members of the developed community, real estate agents, et cetera. The uh. The community forum, or I guess it was an open house at the decorum, I thought was great, but it wasn't information overload, right? There are all these stations, a bunch of great boards, a ton of great information on what the town's doing now. You know, a a basis or a uh a framework for these regs and the associated guidelines, it's just, it's a lot, right? For anybody to go in there and say, you know, put everything together and all pine on on any that. Wasn't really the forum for that, sure, there were opinions expressed, but. Uh, I thought it was a really good start, I think that's a really cool idea to. Uh, have us put together some uh development type examples and, at least that's what I heard. Try to play out whoever attends this future workshop, community forum, community conversation. To to depict exactly what would transpire based on the regs and the guidelines for a development of fifteen units, as Beth said, or. Whatever it may be, I think that's a pretty neat idea, we could certainly do that.
I always hate to put things off, but I think it would be interesting, something to think about anyway. Would be to uh possibly wait until we have our uh needs assessment completed, because that would be a major. Bit of data to kind of get the public in combination with all this. These ideas, um, again, that's probably putting off things to at least the fall.
Probably a year, because the needs assessment probably won't be done until um. Mid to late fall, um, like holiday season, but that's a, that's an interesting idea, but it would put it off for a while.
I think we were trying to get this in place uh before that, and knowing that we could revise it accordingly. Based on the needs assessment and not put it off longer.
I agree, I that was totally off the top of my head, so I I don't think we want to hold that long.
I think Jack wants to see it in place quickly.
No, but I do have a comment.
Go ahead and instruct him. Come on up to the microphone, just so everybody can hear.
I'm not here for that, but I, we are. Um, Jackie, um Vista Park Development across over there. So we're building twenty-three houses, so we had. And the project was approved five years ago, maybe, you know, so it's, this is an old. And Angie's working towards with their, with the P and Z group to fix. Some of the flaws that we are discovering today um in that. And one of them is, you know, the two uh deed restricted units are. Four hundred and ninety-six square feet with a covered porch. And 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 I reckon that the aspects of the deed restriction. That was applied on there was, it was sort of like putting a square peg in a round hole, the project. Has a common, you know, what we'll call loosely luxury items, like a common building. And a twelve person like pool, hot tub area and. Different storage units for everybody, because they don't have streets and garages and such. Um, so what all of that does, that small square footage compared to the others, and I heard. The idea being that they'd be more commensurate with each other in size moving forward. But what we're finding is, you know, when you only have four hundred and ninety-six square feet, you have a relatively large kitchen and bathroom. And that few feet and same water caps and all of those fixed items that cost the same and. Solar ranch and bigger houses and over there and the little ones, but what that nets is that your costs are so high. That we're not coming to any, we're still. Working through how that's going to work, because, I mean. One could argue, well, we will, but that we can't make any profit at all on them. Because the price, the, you know, for the AMI, all of those things don't work. And then so watching out for that in the future, you know, yeah, nobody made us do that. But it was in the plan when we did it, so um, I'm just saying that all of a sudden, we we end up with something that, oh. Maybe we're supposed to feel lucky that we can make three percent on a house after this post. Uh, COVID economy, et cetera, that's the problem, and that's my only feedback is not trying to blame anybody, but here we are with this. So, oh, we'll be talking to David and and the costs go on. And uh, and we're trying to figure out how that's going to work. Because it won't, because the numbers don't work, press has been helpful, and it's everybody, Angie's been helpful, and everybody's going. How to fix it, so that's some feedback about watching out for that in the future, because, you know, most houses, most projects aren't going to be. Pocket communities and a common building and a twelve person hot tub and all of those kind of luxury items. They wouldn't, one wouldn't think that those should be co-mingled with an affordable housing unit, maybe, I mean, I don't know. We made a mistake, we made a mistake. There we go, that's my feedback, trying to be, it's a hard answer, I'm sure. Thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's super great in theory, but then uh I look at all the other units, and it says, oh my God, they're so expensive. It's like, well, the money has to come from somewhere, right? And I I don't, I also don't know what the answer is.
I think we continue to research what other communities are doing, uh, try to figure out just what the. Possible scenarios are, um. I know it probably sounds, you know, like. This guy's falling to a developer, but there's a part of me that thinks, and the property values and the cost of construction is what it is. The um, the deed restricted units that we're going to acquire. The developer might not make a profit, might lose money on this, and they uh then have to make it up on the market rates. Um, you know, that just makes the market rate, it's that much more expensive, but how else do we create? Community housing. So I think bottom line is, I think this is involved enough that we need a little bit of time to adjust. Digest it and then. Start looking at a a date in July or August, hopefully to do a community forum to introduce this and. Give the community an opportunity to think about.
We have some direction, some guiding heads, so uh we talked about development scenarios and some sort of community forum, we'll figure out how to frame that. And then uh continue looking at what other communities are doing, maybe run. Uh, the framework we have for the regs and guidelines through some uh contacts at uh housing authorities around the state. Community, housing experts around the state, things like that, we can continue doing that, uh, looking at. Date and flyer office for that community forum.
Maybe even September, as soon as possible, giving a little bit of time to digest.
Angie, that sound good?
Thank you for the direction, yeah, that sounds great.
Thank you for all the hard work. I like the direction we're headed, it's just a matter of making the community aware and and making sure we're not missing something. Okay? Anything else on this side, I might give one more opportunity for anybody in line want to weigh in? During that, we'll move on to, I have number thirteen, consideration request to have a Ridgeway representative on the ECO Action Partners Board of Directors. Question, your name's Ellen?
Uh, thank you, I didn't realize my name was on it. You mentioned seven, Eco Action Partners has made a request for the town uh council to consider appointment of a. Specifically, a town council member on their their board of directors, so this would be separate from the Sneples Energy Board. And right now Terry is the town's representative on the Sneples Energy Board. Uh, but again, this is the ECO Action Partners Board of Directors. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think just to go on a little more background, the idea being that um Eco Action Partners does a lot for all the. News companies and and governments and. Jim, um, they also ask for a chunk of mine every year, and. It makes sense for us to have some representation on the board to help guide that discussion. Um, in that direction, so um. I know Terry's talked about how he's already um represented on the SAP and. Um, very involved in Sneples Energy Board, um. Ideally, I think it'd be great if if. Ideally, I think it'd be great if if another council was willing to step up for this item um.
Do we have any info on their meeting, schedule, frequency, all of that good stuff?
Yeah, it's in the letter.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm.
Every two months.
Every.
It's two hours every two months.
Yeah.
Once every other month for two hours.
I I could do that if no one else is dying to do it.
I could be your alternate if you have to miss a meeting or something.
That'd be great. The town Baptist school primary and check them.
I'm calling.
It's just me. Um always the also.
Great. I can't wait to tell everyone here at CC for CA that we have a seat on the board of Eco Action now.
By the way, I asked what the terms is. They said it's for life.
Uh well, you know, here you go.
Motion, uh motion of hope would be great for that. Okay.
Anyone want to make a question?
I'm going to um do we appoint?
Yeah.
Point. Uh Mayor Pro Tem Lincoln, that's um uh potential, well, as a, you have to go through the process, there's an interview process that would you go through to um have to take a seat on Eco Actions Board of Directors. Eco Action Partners Board of Directors.
With with Paul.
I second it.
All right. Um any other discussion? Uh local votes.
House members Graham.
I.
Rover.
Hi.
Montague.
Hi.
Skylar.
Hi.
Scoville.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Lincoln.
Hi.
Thanks for stepping up, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
I'm Beth.
And Molly. Um, all right, so that brings us to new reports, written report reports, Tim Andrews' report we just got today, so um had a chance to skim it. Um anything you want to highlight for us, Preston?
Uh I'll let a few things. We have Julia here uh doing the mural, uh Mary doing highlighting her earlier, and she's doing an awesome job. Great to meet her and have her here for most likely another week and a half, two weeks, but she's starting to make some great progress on that mural. It's looking pretty sweet. And then just a reminder on that, once she gets done, uh we'll process her second invoice and request reimbursement through the mainstream program through our mini grant funds and the entirety of that project will have been uh paid for by mini grant funds and also
David Marywood.
The David Marywood. So it's one good shout out.
Yep. It's incredible. Uh company celebration on the twenty.
That's right. And that is a Friday?
Yep.
It's Friday.
And is the highway cleanup the next day?
It is. Highway cleanup is the very next day. We'll have some, what's that? We'll send out some email reminders in the coming weeks on that. Uh we took delivery of the twenty twenty-five Ford F-150 Power Boost Hybrid about five or six weeks ago. Sergeant Anson's driving that now. And then we finally have the Ford F-150 Lightning EV, which experienced a lot of delays and Shane is pretty pumped to have it now.
Are you driving home? To and from? What's that? Are you driving it to and from home?
Yeah.
Are you afraid of getting a speeding ticket?
It it has a neat feature. It's called a one pedal. And so gas and brake are controlled by one pedal. Everything instead of stopping and it it's kind of interesting. Now I'm afraid of my personal pickup.
Yeah.
But um it's rather interesting that charging it been kind of interesting. In that, let's figure out and where we charge it.
Have you been stranded yet?
Uh no.
Yeah, are you able to do a full day without a local charge? You're charging it overnight at home, I assume.
Uh well, that was a problem. They had the dealership in the twenty-six weeks that it took to get the truck and get the equipment in it. They had assured me that we were going to get a couple of two chargers on the Ford provides with truck. But then the day of delivery, they um kind of backed that off and said, well, because it was pro model truck, we have to go through another part of Ford or for getting the charger. And so they gave me a one ten charger and plug in and first night when I got back, we plugged it in after using it because we had some staff shortages last week unexpected. And so I was covered shifts when I got back and used it that night and then plugged it in um Thursday or Friday morning, I worked out it, told me it would be pulling in jars Monday morning with one ten charger and I had to use it for us. So I had to incorporate a charger mantra. Charge, rapid charge that day to get a full charge and then the charger out here, we had some issues with wiring and some switches got bumped. And it wouldn't work for the night that I needed it to. So it's been a challenge to get that and really develop. You know, when I need to charge it and that kind of stuff, but.
So will they get you a level two at some point then?
Uh we went ahead and it did a budget statement back anyway. Um prior to them telling me and ensuring that we were getting a charger with the truck. So we got one um upgraded in service today at my house, so.
So you said, did you have to plumb in the two thirty volt line?
Uh I had it in my garage either. But then my house has changed, so the new place modification for that, but.
So it's.
It's it's been a project. Um hopefully, the use of that truck is better than getting the truck. Um we're happy to have it. It's really gonna be interesting. Kind of three-point in the drive again, something like that.
Yeah, having having driven a Tesla, the way as soon as you let off the gas, it, you know, brakes sits out because that's how it charges. And then you get in another car and it doesn't do that. It just takes some reminding yourself.
Yeah, and then like pulling up to the stoplight, you like set some brakes, so you have to feather the the gas pedal get all the way up to the line where it'll stop you where you're at.
This joke doesn't really work for the F-150 Lightning joke was, does your truck have that new car spell? And the answer was, no, it's more of an Elon Musk.
Oh, God, no, no, Terry.
That's bad. I mean, the good news is very little maintenance um when it's fully charged, nobody's gonna be able to outrun you. You need to chase them. Um I mean, there's some definite upside, so.
Yeah, I I joke that um won't outrun the char or the truck, but may outrun the charge.
Hopefully not.
You know, something I was thinking about as we keep going down this road, I know we went with the the combo of the EV for Shane and then the hybrid as our patrol vehicle, but Terry, you're the magical expert who knows everything about chargers. Um and I know we had concerns about people taking them home. Um really dialing in the fastest charging we can, even if that takes additional investment, might let us move more towards the EV side if people can get that good recharging during the workday while doing paperwork or things. So not something we have to deal with now, but something as we come around to budget season next, this year or next year to to discuss. Not to give you homework, Terry, I am.
Having a level three charger in town would supplement having the level two chargers. Level two boom should be sufficient if you get to market overnight, but if you don't.
Or we we can't promise that for Marshall's vehicles. They're just not as predictable.
There was one thing we did, I researched a lot to put this level two with the office here. And we, we had enough electrical space and everything in the box and we were able to put in an ADM charger.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the highest of the level two.
Yeah, that you can get. So it'll do a full charge in about three and a half hours from around um half charge.
What's the significant range on this truck?
Uh three hundred and two miles we charge.
Uh I'll just jump in. I had a meeting with uh Eco Action Partners uh reps and uh Paul Hora with SMPA today. And I don't want to uh say anything like too soon, but SMPA is in preliminary, you probably know this, very stages of exploring level three charger deployment somewhere here in town. We've had conversations about two in the last couple of years at this level. Um but we're going to continue that conversation. There's definitely interest, maybe some momentum on at the SMPA side, of course, on our side of exploring it. Maybe SMPA owning, operating, maintaining the charger or chargers, uh not necessarily a necessarily an SBA property, but potentially a town property somewhere, subject to town council approval, but that could be coming down the pike in the next few months to towards the end of the year, but that's something we just talked about today, a couple hours.
And there's some uh new emerging grant opportunities. The rub, just for, just as a quick refresh, remember we had that one guy from just into the level three there. Is that the level three is such a high power usage, pushes the rate class up to the demand rate where the very first charge costs two thousand dollars or something like that. So to be able to amortize that over thirty or sixty charges a month, that screws that cost out, but it's the highest peak power point in the month. The very first car to plug in sees the highest peak power point. And it also requires a much higher power transformer that don't currently exist around town. So there's a cost from transformer and there's a huge impact on the rates. And of course, with your new time of rate use thing, you don't want to charge between four and nine on that rate. So there's a whole complex quilt of issues. And if SMPA can step up and, you know, I helped them put together a special rate for these three-phase chargers, but it still wasn't good enough to make it, he can help from town, so. But they'll keep working on it. They know that, you know, this is coming.
Yeah, it's still preliminary, but.
So even the dam, demand range is subject to the time use?
No, it actually is not. Okay, so it's a good point. It's the one that is not, but nonetheless, it's still punitive.
Yeah, at least you're going to get double tips.
But that would have failed. They used in your level twos here in town is to not plug them in from four to nine P M. Just for the town bill as well, even on level two, especially the ADM. So just just something we keep in mind.
That's what I meant to do.
Right. I can put a timer lock on it to shut off at four, four P M, so it doesn't incur that charge, extra charge.
Um and then with uh recent turnover and staffing uh issues that the city of your race having in their police department, uh Shane, Brian, guys have stepped up and helped to and they're helping now field train base one, maybe two now, new officers for the city of your rate. And uh and that's a big deal, so.
That's great. Yeah, well, I see that you're important.
Um and then uh last thing I'll say, reminder that we are in voluntary water restrictions currently. Uh it'd be great if everybody can do their best to observe what we have for those guidelines on watering. We've made uh some pretty good efforts in the last few weeks to visit with and call some of our biggest not hot of home system water users to get them to curb their water use or at least Spotify based on what we have guidelines. And I think we've made some really good strides there, make sure that demand doesn't exceed capacity, since we just have that one source for the time being. Um really running, of course, we still have uh water in the reservoir, but it'd be nice not to have to use that this summer, so. Everyone could help promote that and educate maybe more of them.
All right, thanks, Preston. Let's, let's.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Different topic. Do we have an estimated time of arrival on the chairs?
No, we don't.
It's a good question.
It's a good one, too.
Oh, that's a good answer. It's an answer.
Were they ordered? Yes. On the tables.
Okay. Well, we'll be excited to see when we get it.
Get new tables too?
The chairs won't care about new tables.
Uh so the tables are hired?
They bring the legs off.
All right, any other comments or questions on that uh Tim Andrews' report? I thought the joke was pretty good.
Kind of like it did.
What? Joking.
I thought it was silly.
Preston, this though.
I was pressed in this one. I thought it was pretty.
You didn't like it?
Agreed.
Well, just goes to show you.
That's a good question.
I always, I always encourage more people to to submit.
I submitted and it didn't even need to cut, so I think I'm better.
I hate to hear that. That's bad.
Could be some implicit bias there.
I want to highlight the uh General Fundations Down payment assistance program that we talked to one devious about, excited about. Or or Ridgeway is almost was one of the first recipients. And then I know one other person who works at Voyager who got one of those, okay, in system. Well, so or grants, so that's, that's really exciting to see. I mean, it every little bit helps and this is another great example of a little piece of the puzzle that makes things more affordable, gets people to be able to live here who wouldn't otherwise be able to.
Yeah, Mary, thanks for saying that. And that was the motivation for the report because Elaine will be covering it for you all in the next couple of months, so. Uh make it as talk contribution, talk contribution.
I will, I will say, um and I can compose an email or you can pass it along, Preston. I would love to see them aggregate their case studies a little bit to the point where as a community member, I can't point at it and say, wow, now I know how much you make and exactly who you're talking about. Um.
Just privacy wise, that's a, that's good.
I I think it would be sufficient. I mean, all of the information that they had, it scrambled it a little different, like we funded a town to tell your right employee, we founded a URA small business owner instead of calling out the specific small business. Um a nonprofit, I I just, I think we have to be really aware um that all of these things come with strings and people are agreeing to that, but they're not necessarily agreeing to being called given that information publicly.
Or they should at least be given that option.
Yeah, and maybe they have. I don't know. I got, I got a little ick.
Yeah, I I'm guessing, well, like I know Lori and her family, they were featured in a couple of different places.
They're very public about it, but maybe not.
But we need to, I think it's a good point to ask them to make sure that they are doing a guessing.
Yeah.
Yes. In the system.
Let's just say that one out.
Um, all right, what else? Any uh community reports?
No.
Angie covered mine.
SAP even had their uh meeting last week. Things are moving along. We did pick September fifth as the date. Or um the one of the two public events, they're going to do the ride and drive event concurrent with the Rendez. And they're going to have a, we're looking at SMPA maybe pay for a booth and have some of beneficial application appliances and have Eco Action Partners there and SMPA there. The on the September fifth, we're looking at holding ribbon cutting for the micro grid at the deck room, which would likewise have a number of um uh tabletop displays of variety of sustainability things, talk about the Green Street Park. Put up some poster boards, have SMPA, Eco Action Partners, maybe protect our winters. Uh the town, there's another one, I can't remember.
Sustainability?
The Sustainability Advisor Board, SAP. So that will be there, one of the two uh work item uh events that they had planned on holding the year. What else can?
Uh it's the uh trash recycle compost sorting service.
Oh, yeah.
Uh.
Looking at SAP becomes the new volunteers for music and art to trash.
I know Ridgeway, you're a community council at their event last week, asked for volunteers and um one thought I had is we should reach out to um Eco Action and see if they can bring an additional um set of barrels of trash, because we've only got, yeah, we've only got two sets. We've always said a third set would be nice, especially if they're volunteers to them.
They are bringing them for July third for sure. They are bringing them for July third for sure.
Oh, cool.
Well, look at the remaining days, but Tyler Simmons will be here for July third at least.
He's, he's with.
He's with the Eco Action Partners, as I experienced that. Service.
That'd be the first music in the hire.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
And the SAP set out today a signup sheet to volunteer. Assistant of the.
Would you make sure that's coordinated with Rock, because I know Rock.
Yeah, and, and Dave's on both, so.
Okay, good.
Uh, if you want, I can forward to that, Preston, you probably received it, it's the best chance to. If you can, if any council members want to volunteer for a couple of our shift. Great way to meet all your neighbors and.
You get a free beer.
You get a free beer. Okay, and all the beers that are half empty.
We're so bad. Oh, man. All right, anybody have anything else? Go to the order, they say. All right, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks for your input, Jeff. There's a lot of helpful input for this.
Yeah.